A meeting called to honor February 20th, 2020. This is a recorded meeting. Welcome, everyone. Good to see you all here.
Welcome.
We're going to review minutes of last meeting. Comments, questions? Do we have to wait?
Well, we...
Let's wait.
Wait until everybody's had a chance to read.
Okay.
I mean, John Staberski mentioned the last, he didn't want to act on the last meeting because of the fact he didn't have a chance to read him.
Do we have copies that we're passing out right now?
There are. I have some on the table here.
Okay.
I passed two.
So, we should take them with us to read or read them right now? Okay.
Do you want to take...
Okay. I would believe it. Thank you.
No, I...
Do you have copies of the minutes?
I'm good with the meeting minutes. I'll write them.
Was he emailed? Was he shared by email?
I did not get them.
So, Alex, again, thank you for doing the minutes. You can send them to Sue in draft format, like with draft on it or whatever, and then she can send it back to everybody so we have it via email?
Okay.
Do you want to do it like that? Okay.
Yeah. She didn't send... Oh, okay.
But maybe we can approve those then tonight.
Yeah.
You already shared these? What'd you say? Oh, with Sue? Okay. Maybe she's new. Maybe she doesn't know to send them on that. I'll email her tomorrow.
We're going to continue the meeting for open meeting on the Dollar General LLC public hearing, and we're going to talk about a change in the date of our next meeting.
No, it's not the next meeting.
Well, it's, yeah, well, it is going to be from the next meeting.
The Dollar General meeting. We're going to want to reschedule it.
Reschedule.
March the 19th.
Right.
7:00 P.M.
Well, it's scheduled for the 12th, and we're going to change it to the 19th.
Yes, it needs to be the 19th.
Right. So, that's what we're going to discuss right now.
So, we need to make sure that Sue sends the notices out to the abutters so that everybody understands and we don't get accused of going around everything.
And why are we changing from the 12th?
Because Mr. Staberski, I don't think can be there, and he expressed interest in being there. Okay?
That's good.
So...
Are we going to, Mr. Chairman, are we going to meet on the 12th for the other scheduled meeting and then the 19th, and then we're going to stop doing two meetings a month and meet the second Thursday?
Yes.
That's what you want to do?
Well, let's get this straightened out first, and then we'll go to that.
Yeah, we just got to make sure that Sue knows not to schedule meetings but once a month unless we decide as a board to vote to do a meeting in between.
Right.
Okay? That way, we don't end up with duplication. But we do have a hearing scheduled, I believe, on March the 12th.
We do.
And I think it's 127 North Main Street.
Right.
Okay?
So, we'll have that one as scheduled?
Yeah. And then we'll do the Dollar General one on the 19th. And both of those will be at 7:00. And it's some thought that come April, we should be scheduling the meetings at 6:00 because we're going to have a double hearing on the 19th, as it looks like right now, between the Dollar General and 6th North Street. Okay?
I thought we told the 6th North Street people to come at 6:00.
We can't because it's not posted for that. That's where we're running into trouble, the postings.
Yeah, but we got until 48 hours to post, not six weeks out here.
Okay, so...
Well, I'm just, Mr. Chairman, I mean, whatever time you want to start the meeting, I'll start the meeting. I mean, I thought that we were going to, last month, we were going to delay it to the 19th for Mr. Staberski, but unfortunately, the information that you're giving us now is that the 12th was already advertised legally. That meeting was already posted in the newspaper.
Correct.
And that has to be a 30-day posting.
That's correct.
So, we're going to have to deal with that anyways.
Right. All right, so someone make a motion to move it to the 19th?
Well, this gentleman here is with the Dollar General folks, and maybe we should get his input.
Oh, okay.
Because he's been raising his hand. So, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine with me.
Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
We're not opening the hearing tonight.
This is scheduling, yeah.
This is only talking about scheduling. We're not opening it up for testimony pro or against.
Chad Zurbaker with Scotty Bell with the record. And I had...
Can you spell your last name? I'm so sorry.
B.R.U., B.A.K.E.R.
Okay.
And we've been getting communication mainly with Sue on the rescheduling when this hearing got continued, and for the past several weeks, we've been clearing everybody's schedules for the 12th. I did get a call from Sue today about 4:00, stating that they wanted to switch it from the 12th to the 19th. I did reach out to our attorney, who is the most important piece on our end, and he is unavailable the week of the, the week of the 19th.
Okay.
So, if they're not available on the week of the 19th, I guess we're going to have to come here anyways to deal with the North Street people. But that's a continuation of a hearing. So, does that only have to be, we offer them the 12th or then the second Tuesday of April?
If there's a quorum on the, if it's already been advertised and there is a quorum of the board on the 12th, can we still continue with the 12th?
I don't think we want to do that because we got members that want to be here.
Who are at the initial, maybe?
And also, we have our town attorney, who hasn't got back to me yet, when he can be available.
Sue had confirmed, she told me that he was confirmed for the 12th, but he wasn't confirmed for the 19th.
Well, anyway, there's been a communication problem.
Yeah.
But the next meeting we had, in the minutes, we've got a new date to continue the discussion was to the, I don't know if it's the right hearing or not, but the 19th was the date that we were shooting for. Now, you say your attorney can't be present?
He cannot be present on the 12th or on the 19th.
So, why don't, we're going to meet...
Wasn't it stated earlier, too, that it was advertised for the 12th?
No, no. The 127 North Main Street was in the newspaper in the legal ads for the 12th because the 12th is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Right.
We're supposed to meet, historically, we cleared all this up in the fall, on the second Thursday of the month. So, that second Thursday was the 12th of March, and that 127 North Main Street issue was advertised in the newspaper, and the cost of advertising and everything is substantial to the applicant that we have an obligation, I think, to be here on our regularly scheduled meeting night.
So, we will, on the evening of the 12th, Bernie will have a chance to talk to town council, and town council can talk to the attorney for Dollar General to see if they can come up with a consensus as to a date to continue the hearing. And that is the best way, and Mr. Staberski, if he wants to give any input, he can.
Or anybody else who needs to be here.
Yeah. But I mean, that's about the best we can do, and on the evening of the 12th, make sure you have it on the agenda to set up a new scheduled date to continue the hearing. All right? Because of the fact that there's conflicts. I mean, you don't want to go, we don't want to go forward and not have your attorney be able to be represented. I mean, it just leaves us up to a suit.
Right. We've, for the last three, four weeks, we've been communicating with everybody on the 12th and lining up all the schedules. That's why, you know, to find out two hours before this meeting, you know.
Well, I mean, it's a decision of the chairman, I mean, whether, what you put on the agenda for the 12th. I mean, if these folks want to be here on the 12th, I don't know how you, and it's a scheduled meeting and you have a quorum, how do you not...
Well, we can take a, we can take a vote on it.
I mean, I've changed my schedule specifically to be here on the 19th, but not on the 12th because that's what we talked about, and I know that's more convenient for John, but we have to do business on the 12th. Some members of the board have to do business on the 12th. So, maybe you could put them on for, let's say, whoever else had other business. We only have so much time in the night to do things. So, if you manage the time, I don't, I mean, obviously, their hearing is a lot more well-attended than others. So, that creates another, you know, an issue for us as well where if all of our members want to be present for it, and we talked about it as the 19th, you know, I don't think there's any fault on our administrative staff if it's in the, you know. I think the best thing to do would be to schedule it for, the hearing for the second Thursday in April because that's our regular meeting night.
I would agree. It seems that, you know, we've had some back and forth, and we want to, you know, with all due respect to your timeline, I think that it should be relatively simple for people to clear their calendar for something in the first, the second week of April, and, you know, there definitely were issues that were open. We were expecting to have more information. I don't know if, you know, if the, well, clearly, we just don't feel, I think, capable and willing to meet without John on the 12th or on the 19th.
Well, they're not available on the 19th. That's what you're saying right now.
Yeah. No, and I just question why with, why with one specific member when there's still a quorum?
Well, I don't think we even know if we still have quorum.
Well, there's, there are regular members and there are alternate members. Okay? And Mr. Staberski is a regular member.
Who was at the first part of the hearing?
I was at the original hearing. Okay? And...
Yeah, we have to be careful that we're not having alternates voting on a project like this.
Could he, could he remote in, you know?
You would have to vote it. You mean, you would have to vote with alternates?
No, I understand, but could he, could John remote in, like on the, on Skype or something if he wants to be here?
I'm not sure of the statute on that, but I'm sure the attorneys would pick it apart either way or the other.
I was pretty, I was pretty clear when I left the last meeting that we were meeting today, and then we were meeting March 19th, and that was it.
That's the way I remember it.
That's the way I remember it, too, when I was there.
But I got word from the office over here that we already spent money in the applicant to advertise in the newspaper for the 127 North Main Street, so...
Well, that one's still on, so...
Well, I know it's still on, but I'm just saying, in my head, I walked out of here that we weren't meeting in March until the 19th.
Right, right.
And it seems to me our agenda tonight is to open the hearing and set the new date.
Correct.
Right.
So, we're trying to do right now.
Why don't we do it for April? Second Thursday.
Well, the trouble we run into now is, is our council going to be available? That's where the, that's where the problem has been.
So...
That's been the problem.
I think if we set the date hard for that date now, that's when it's going to be.
Right.
Not necessarily because you're going to have to have town council there because...
Well, I know, and then you're going to get it, you're getting into town meeting season already then, too, but...
That's the following week, but...
Well, not ours, but for any labor council that represents people with town issues across the state, that becomes town meeting season.
It's New England.
It's New England. I know. I just, I don't want to...
Well, the second, the second Tuesday in April, the second Thursday is the 9th. Okay?
Yeah.
Now, do you, we can tentatively schedule it for the 9th, assuming that everybody can, all the councils can be present and we can work it out, or we can leave it up to the chairman to get a hold of the parties and try to come with a consensus date, and, or we can do that, then we can talk about it on the 12th and reschedule the date. It's up to you.
And that's up to the chair. We could put it on the agenda on the 12th, open it and close it. That's, you know, within reasonable time. I mean, we don't have to get into it, really. I mean, I just...
The problem is, once you open a hearing, okay, you can miss one, you can miss one meeting. Okay? And you can go through the tapes, the way I understand it, and familiarize yourself with everything that happened.
Right.
But if it's more than two meetings you miss, right, then, then that person can't participate. Okay? So, I just want to try to avoid that if we can.
Well, I want to avoid it as I can, too. I also think that we have a responsibility to the town to clear these matters up in reasonable amount of time and not drag them out for six or eight months.
Well, it sounds like we still have to meet the 12th.
Right.
We still have to meet the 19th for the 127 North Main and for the North Street.
Yeah. Right.
So, we have, we're meeting. We're, in the future, we're going to try to make it the second Thursday and work with Sue on that. So, the only thing we really need to finalize now is, as much as possible, the April meeting for the continuation. Right?
The 9th.
Well, I guess I'm open to flipping back on my vote because if, if we can't guarantee tonight, then we don't know that the second Thursday of the month, our town council's going to be available. I do hear what you're saying about, we're just kicking this can down the road. We do have a 12th, the March 12th, and we know both councils, they'll be available, we'll be available. John could catch up and not be out of compliance, right, by keeping up and...
Can we move it to the 12th or is that...
It's already kind of scheduled for the 12th, right?
No, it isn't.
It was scheduled for the...
The minutes, the minutes.
Oh, the 19th?
The 19th is in the minutes.
But we did have administrative connection to make the night, the 12th, a doable date for both councils.
I haven't seen that in writing for both councils. He's here tonight representing them, saying that their council's not available on the 19th, and at 4:00 this afternoon, they were told that it was the 19th, and they thought it was the 12th. So, I don't, Mr. Chairman does the communication over here and there. I just went back through my emails before tonight's meeting and saw that the posting was in the paper for 127 North Main Street, and then I was like, because I had to put it for vacation time, and I was like, I always thought we had one, one meeting, and then that's when I inquired. And the answer was, well, we got to meet on the 12th. It's been in the newspaper. You've got to deal with it. Okay. So, now, that's, you know, like I said, like I said early, five minutes ago, when I walked out of here the last time, I thought we were meeting tonight in March 19th.
So, you thought Dollar General was going to be the 19th?
Yeah, because Mr. Staberski wasn't available on the 12th. I said to the chairman, well, we're not going to do this two meetings a month thing. He's like, no, we're not doing two meetings a month. We're, do one meeting. We understand that Mr. Staberski can't make it the second Thursday in, in March, so we were going to go the following week because it met all of us that was here's schedule.
Then we hear our council can't be here. Well, maybe we want it without him, and then maybe we just have to...
On the 19th?
On the 19th, their council can't be here.
Right.
As of, again, and I have been going back to my emails to confirm that there's multiple emails.
Even if our own isn't here, you know, we need to move forward with this the best we can.
Right.
And if they're going to hold us up, they're going to hold us up, but, or they send somebody.
And we continued tonight because town council wasn't available, and we were prepared to have everything in last week and present tonight, but we could delay it tonight because town council was not available. So, that's, so, I, you know, the understanding that I had, and this was, it's not new, that was three, four weeks ago.
Right. And we also asked for all the documents and stuff that we're going to go over to be provided administratively in advance, and we haven't got anything.
Right, because we knew that we were still three weeks out.
Right, okay.
We are gathering all that information. I was out there today taking pictures for the 3D renderings and all that stuff. So, we are putting that together. Had the meeting been tonight, we would have...
Put it together quicker.
...had a week ago, so...
So, are we going to have this the 19th?
Let's leave it scheduled for the 19th, and if something comes up toward the 12th, at the night of the 12th, and we can move to set up a different date that's more compatible with everybody.
Can you say...
We need to start moving forward, is the point.
But the 12th works for everybody except for one board member who can, who can...
So, the 19th, is the 19th, who had an issue with the 19th?
Mr. Staberski.
With the 19th?
No, it was our, we just found out about the 19th. Our council is not available on the 19th.
Okay, okay.
Again, the reason why we were careful of this is we don't want a, we want to have full members here for this one because it's of the issues.
Specific member.
Exactly. But if we can't, we can't. I mean, we just have to, somewhere along the line, we're going to have to make our decisions, unfortunately, and not everyone's going to be happy. We know that no matter what happens, no one's happy. So, we're, let's go with the, let's stay with the 19th. Let's take a vote. Anyone take a motion for a vote?
Well, what's, what do we vote?
We've already voted on the 19th.
Because their council's not available, right? They're not going to, or is that not our issue?
Our issue is, I think we voted already to set it up on the 19th.
I believe we, that's correct.
And I think what happened is, for some reason, it didn't get communicated to the secretary, who's new. Okay? And no fault of her own, but evidently, it didn't get communicated. But if the minutes of the, that I'm looking at here, there's a...
Yeah, let's look at them.
Bernie said, we are, we're all in agreement, having the hearing on March 19th at 6:00 P.M. instead of our usual time of 7:00 P.M. as Dollar General will take quite a while. Okay? And then there was some more discussion on some other stuff, right? But I think that was the...
Right, so, this board didn't vote to move it to the 12th.
Motion by John Staberski, seconded by Adam Sokolowski, voted 6-0-0 to continue the public hearing. Oh, that's Renaissance.
Right.
Which reading are you looking at? I'm looking at the notes of the 23rd of January that say, moved by Adam Sokolowski, seconded by John Staberski, and voted 5-0 to continue the public hearing for South Deerfield D.G. until February 20th.
Right, which we're here now.
Right.
So, I don't see where we put it into the, where we had a motion...
The next set in the meeting minutes.
The February 13th last week?
Yeah, last week.
Where are those?
That sentence right top there, I don't...
Are these the February 13th minutes? Yes. So, you and I have, don't have these yet, okay. Do we have more copies of those right now, Alex, or no?
You can take, you can take, well...
Okay, that's fine. We'll just, we'll just...
Yes, so, this is, this is Renaissance Builders until March the, oh, well, you...
Oops, sorry, I think we missed something.
So, it looks like we just continued.
Right here, it says, Sadowsky proposes a new date for continuing February 20th to March...
What page are you on of those minutes?
Two.
Adam?
It's the back of the first page.
Okay.
Paper saving, printing.
About where?
It says Sadowsky, above motion.
Okay.
We'll get to the 19th then.
No? Right here, okay.
Just a question, and I, I don't know the process, but since the meeting was continued from the 23rd of January to tonight, could action be taken on our case without us being at present at the 13th, the hearing on the 13th? Could a vote have been taken at the last hearing since it wasn't, it was continued until tonight?
Could I can explain that again slowly, so we all...
So, it sounds like decisions were made at the last hearing, which we weren't intending to have because our case was continued until tonight.
We did not discuss your application. All we're trying to do is accommodate the dates of when the board members would be available.
There's no discussion of anything about, anything that had to do with your, it was just that we're setting a date up is all we're doing.
And it doesn't look like we actually voted on the motion that we took the date of March 19th.
Because, again, that was, but we didn't technically...
I believe it's solely up to the chairman, under, under the law, to set the dates of the meeting.
But we didn't technically vote on...
I don't think we can, I don't think we have to. The chairman sets the meeting dates by law.
And so, did we vote on this motion?
I don't think we vote on meeting.
We haven't, we haven't approved the minutes yet. It was in draft form right now, but that's what's been presented to us.
Either way, the chairman has the sole authority to set meeting dates.
You're going to always boot it to town council?
He hasn't got back to me, so that hasn't worked out very well.
And we need to make sure we allow enough time for all the paperwork and notifications in the paper and all that.
Well, it's, it's a continuation, so it's not a re-notification.
Okay.
That, that's the issue. Because we haven't opened 127 North Main Street, then it has to be re-advertised in the butters' notices.
That was the issue then, okay.
Right? So, soon as you open it...
Then you don't have to do all that again.
Right, they don't have to do all that again.
Okay.
So, that's the issue why we have to be here on the 12th. We, because I'm sure the folks at the 12th would say, oh, we can come the 19th, whatever, but it would, they, because the applicant has to pay for that notification.
Gotcha.
We haven't even opened that hearing yet.
Yeah.
That's why we have to meet on the 12th.
Okay. So, but the D.G. is going to be a continuation, so we don't have to go through all of that.
The chairman can set a continuation at any point for the meeting, as far as I understand. That's, it's a chairman's discretion on the agenda, too. He could decide administratively without other board members if he wants to add, after talking to county council, if he wants to add Dollar General to the, you know, to the 12th agenda.
I think we're pretty well in agreement. We want the 19th, though, from what I can see.
Well, that's what was said at the last meeting.
And I, we need to stick with that.
I don't disagree with you, Bernie. I, like I said, I'm, you know...
Unfortunately, that's the way it is.
Do you need to vote on it?
I don't think we need to vote on it because the chairman sets the agenda and the meeting dates, and I think he's...
That night, we also have the Renaissance, if they come back in or supposed to come, but they also will probably need to go to, it's some thought they might need a variance and they might have to file another...
Is that the North Street?
That's the North Street one.
Right, but they were planning on coming that night, and I heard that they already applied for variance.
Okay.
So, hopefully, it's posted.
It's not posted, yet.
Well, hopefully, when it goes in the newspaper, it's that date.
Okay. So, I guess the discussion's ended. It's going to be...
March 12th for the, no, no, for the 127?
North Main Street.
North Main Street.
North Main Street, correct.
As scheduled.
And then it's going to be...
March 19th for the other two.
March 19th, as we had agreed upon, unfortunately.
But we're already saying that the 19th doesn't work.
Okay, does it work now?
We were being, communicate the 12th.
All right, so if it doesn't work now, if it doesn't work now, then you can send, and if, and if it still is not going to work, you have no fill-in lawyer, then you can send administratively, and the chairman can pick a new date, and the date will most likely be the second Thursday in August, or April.
If it doesn't work out, send us an email saying it doesn't work, and we'll go to April.
I'm telling you now, it doesn't work, so...
Well, anyway, my suggestion is, talk to your council, have talked to our council, who will talk to Bernie, and we'll have it on the agenda on the 12th if we, to set up a different date that's going to be compatible with both parties, all parties.
So, is the hearing's being continued until 12th or to the 19th?
I would say we continue it to the 19th.
19th, but...
You said on 12th.
He said if between now and then...
Right.
You guys come up with a different date, it could be discussed on...
So, if you say, you come up to me, you call 11th or something, we can put it on the agenda, we discuss it, and then we can set another date at that time, but right now, it's going to be the 20th, 19th. All right?
But I'm telling you that, that doesn't work. So, what's the next, you know, if it happens, what's the next date?
Well, you talk to your council. We're not going to talk about it anymore.
But I've talked to them. The 19th doesn't work for us, so it's either the 12th or it's the second Thursday in April. You're going to make us come back?
We are not in a position to set an other date other than the 19th at this point because we need to talk to our council. Okay?
Yeah. And I tried to get a hold of him, and he has not got back to me, so we're in limbo, unfortunately.
And tonight was canceled because of the town council. You know, we're...
I understand that.
And, and Mr. Decker said earlier that the one member, he could miss a meeting and still watch it, and there's no issue. I, I struggle. If council's available, that's the date that's been communicated to us for the last month why we've been pushed out another 30 days.
Okay. There'll be, there'll be two members, right?
Move on to something else.
Because you're not going to be here on the 12th.
Close the discussion, we're going to go the 19th.
All right, second to close the discussion on it.
Discussion's ended.
You might have to vote it, Judge.
Was the hearing ever opened?
We didn't open a hearing tonight.
We can't open a hearing tonight.
We did not open a hearing tonight. We're only talking about scheduling. Okay? We haven't opened a hearing tonight.
Don't you have to open it since it was continued? You can just continue it to the next?
I don't think we have to.
We'll talk to town council.
Well, you want to open it, then just set the date and then vote to close the hearing?
It could be a trap.
Yeah, we open it up, and we have people in not hearing.
Well, it's on our agenda. Mm-hmm. Open hearing and set a new date, so...
Open hearing, set a date. We're not open hearing to discuss. That's specific. Open, open hearing to discuss a new date.
Well, then, I think we should, I think we should cover our, I'm sorry, we should cover ourselves.
Open the hearing, set the date.
Open the hearing, set the new date and, and close the hearing. I move to open the hearing.
Whatever you guys want, because I'm going to tell you, we're going to get sued no matter what we do.
Oh, I know. I don't really care about that. I mean, I get a long line of people wanting to meet.
Well, let's, let's stick to this. Let's open it.
Okay, Bernie?
Motion to open the meeting up.
Seconded. Hearing, record reflect hearing.
Open the hearing up, yeah, I second that.
And then propose the new date, or set the new date?
Yeah, propose a new date.
You're going to set, no, you set it.
Who said it?
You set the new date.
I said it is the 19th.
Of March?
Correct.
2020. 2020. At what time you want it?